All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I've been a minute since I've chaired a meeting. I'm assuming somebody's got to say something. All right, roll call, please.
Thorson.
Here.
Vanish Thirunath.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Toert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato. Greer. Hanauer Friedman. Locke.
Here.
Lockshin. Michaels.
Present.
Owen. Pugh.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rogers. Sexton. Smith.
Here.
Store.
Present.
Straub.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Thank you. Next up, approval of the agenda and the addenda. Jen first, Jennifer second. Straub and then Locke. Sorry, I'll get you next time. Discussion? All those in favor? I opposed? I don't see any public comment going once, going twice, any board communications. Yes?
Just want people to know, actually, at Illinois, the men's hockey team has started recently, along with the women's here shortly. Those are one of the few sports you could go to at the university where the facility is open to everybody, and one of the few places where you can go to and actually afford a ticket. The women's games are all free, the concessions are really cheap, so maybe as a thought, and it's nice and cool when it's hot outside.
Thank you. Any other discussion or communications? Don't see any discussion and decision points. So what we're going to do is first, we're going to do the fiscal year 2025 decision points, and we have the benefit of having a spreadsheet that was made by somebody who knows how to do finance, much different than last year, if you recall my attempts with that Excel spreadsheet. So we're like at the next level. So we're just going to go through this, and just as finance chair, I want to say two things. One, remember that we are already doing a deficit budget. Three things. Two, remember the difference between recurring and non-recurring costs. So things that are non-recurring happen once, things like personnel happen forever unless we get rid of that person, and that should factor into how we decide things. And three, just remember that our fund balance totals directly and significantly impact our bond rating, and that is important as well. That said, I think we're just going to bring up the spreadsheet and just start working through it.
We have one thing to talk about first, and then we'll do that.
So speaking of bond rating, today we gave the presentation to Moody's for them to re-rate our bonds. Hopefully, we will get that score in the next week and a half to two weeks. Overall, I think it went pretty good. One slide from that presentation that I wanted to point out, and since we're going to be talking about fund balance so much, I wanted to explain this a little bit better because it's been a source of confusion in the past. So there are two different types of fund balance calculations. There's the GAAP fund balance, which is calculated in the audit, and then there's budgetary fund balance. Budgetary fund balance is usually used for forecasts, budgets, and policymaking because it more closely aligns to cash flow. GAAP fund balance is done in the audit, and it's usually significantly higher than budget fund balance due to timing of when things hit the books. When we do our Moody's presentation, they're more concerned with audited numbers, so we calculate it on the GAAP fund balance. So these percentages are quite a bit higher than, you'll see what we talk about today in the spreadsheet, which uses budgetary fund balance. One thing about that, though, is for policy, budgetary fund balance is usually the ideal one to use. If a municipality government agency wanted to use GAAP fund balance for their calculation for the policy, it could be done. It's a lot harder to forecast in the future because it's based on historical numbers, but if you did that, you would also need to adjust your policy to significantly increase the percentage your goal is. So right now, our goal is 16.7% based on budgetary fund balance, and then we've kind of talked about 25% as an internal goal. If we were using GAAP fund balance for the calculations, we would want to aim more for 40% based on State of Illinois' guidelines and recommendations. So I just wanted to, because the Moody's presentation was today and we used those calculations for that, I just kind of wanted to explain those and why those are different than the other numbers we'll be using today.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about that? All right, I know that you're going to have to make that a lot bigger.
Okay, I'm sorry, I blanked out. I was supposed to, while Michelle was doing that, I was supposed to keep talking. So, okay, so just a couple of points about this. This spreadsheet shows both general fund and public safety sales tax fund. So the general fund is the top portion, public safety sales tax is the bottom portion, and then there's a combined line. Revenue for public safety sales tax is predicted to slow in FY '25 due to lowered interest rates and lower inflation rates. Revenue for the general fund is expected to increase by over a million, but expected expenditures are going to increase by over 3.7 million. The budget right now, without any potential additions on these budget requests, is at a $2.5 million deficit spending out of fund balance. That's combined general fund and public safety sales tax. The general fund is about $1.1 million deficit, which would drop our fund balance percentage, and remember, that's budgetary fund balance percentage, from 29% to 25%. And the public safety sales tax fund's estimated deficit right now is about $1.4 million. Things that have already been included into these numbers are an estimated salary increase for AFSMI and non-bargaining based on recommendations from the Labor Committee, $2 million from public safety sales tax fund balance to pay for the purchase of the state's attorney's office and public defender's software program, and to do the next step of the Barry Dunn RFP process for the court document management system update. Contract increases in salary for, or contract increases to expenditures in all departments where the contract increases are known, and then we budgeted, originally budgeted about $675,000 in health insurance premium costs. Now that is being, it's still in the budget, but it's now budgeted as a transfer to the health insurance fund to store for payments to the HRA.
How much?
Right around $675,000.
And, you know, in sake of transparency, that's a very healthy amount for us to start the HRA with. We're not skimping with that level of money. No, I just had a question. When you were budgeting for increases, and you said with some of the labor agencies or whatever you want, did you budget it what their first request was, or did you kind of take an average of what was going on? We, for the sake of the fact that we're in bargaining, we're not saying the amount. We were conservative. We were very like, what could we actually afford to do? And it is, it is not higher than that, and it's not anything that would constitute generous.
I think maybe this would be a good start, because this is actually a decision point, right? Do we want, so the breakdown right now, this is how it's in the budget. And again, so I want to be clear, this means that we're budgeting $2.5 million in the red?
Yes.
Right?
But there is a $2 million spend down of fund balance that we've been saving up.
Right.
For the court system.
Right, right. So people were commenting, you know, in the past year, like, why is this public safety sales tax fund balance so high? Because we were saving up for that court system. So then there's half a million dollars is still in the red, so that's where we're starting the conversation. The $2 million, it's like if you're saving up for a car or whatever, right? And you decide to buy the car. The half a million dollars is a structural deficit. This is the second year in a row that we're starting this conversation with a half a million dollar structural deficit. So anything we decide to do today is going to add to it. My question is, do we want to leave this deficit as it is? Or do we want to move it? Travis and I were talking in the hallway, so we could, I will say this, yes, our goal, our target for a general fund fund balance is 16.7%. That is the lowest, what is it, GFOA?
That's GFOA.
Fund balance, like that's the bottom of the floor. And to be blunt, the reason that our county has had that is because we've been so broke for so long that for a very long time, anything higher would have been a pipe dream, and we were not at 16%. We were regularly at like 12%. That said, so if you think about it, 25% is about three months, right? Like, that's what they tell you to have at your own house. I, though, think that we don't necessarily need $3 million of unencumbered fund balance in public safety. Do you see what I'm saying? We know there's still some more money for JANO. I will remind you that $1 million of it is the bottom, like of where we should be on that. Like, that's sort of the, that's not sort of, that is like the county's financial policy because that's the real fund balance. The stuff above it is the stuff that we cannot touch because of the bonds. We have to keep it there. So really, the available unencumbered fund balance is 3.24806. I think we should push some of that debt, more of that debt, down to public safety sales tax, maybe a million, half a million, and get our general fund up a little bit and have more of that debt land on public safety sales tax. But that is actually a decision point of this board, so I opened it up for discussion. Yes?
Quick question. I'm trying to remember, is the extra person we're hiring for CJ, is that part of this or not?
That has already been budgeted.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
The meeting with Moody's today, if we move some of this deficit to public safety sales tax and not in our regular fund balance, does that help? Is that something they want to see?
It would not help the current rerating because those are based on '23 actuals.
Okay.
So then this is future '25.
Will it help in the future?
Yes, it potentially could help in the future, but not this current rerating.
Yes, I mean, one of the things that helped us get our bond rating up, and just one, I'm not saying like it was the only thing, but was the fact that we had driven up our fund balance. Jen?
Thank you. Just make eye contact, we'll figure it out. So when you say potentially in the future, like if we have to build on at the courthouse to, you know, for our new judge and everything, any capital project there, having the fund balance higher now will help us years down the road, right? Or do they only care about the one year at a time? I'm really just trying to understand.
So they care about a, not just one year, how it looks over the last five years to make sure that there's a history of decent fund balance, and it's not just a one-time special occasion that we have a high balance because we know we're going to be borrowing.
So that would be good in, you know, the future if we right now have it, this year?
Yes.
Yeah, and regardless of if we're picking up new capital projects, we have 20 years of bonds ahead of us. So we always, for at least the next 20 years, want to have a good bond rating because we can continually be refunding and improving our interest rates throughout the lifetimes of these bonds, so.
We refunded this current bond that we're working on right now. This is the third or fourth time, so I mean, having a consistently good rating can help with the current bonds.
I will say, if you look at a greater, longer longitude of our fund balance, it does look a little spiky. You know what I mean? Because, I mean, that, it kind of does go a little bit. Like, the 5% drop makes it look a little spiky.
So Travis, thinking ahead, seeing some of your projections, if I remember, you show the general fund fund balance dropping in '26, '27, and '28, right?
Yes, because expenditures are growing faster than revenues.
So this potentially, if we did this move, potentially would keep us above 25%, which is one of those benchmarks that the rating services look at for potentially one to two years.
Yes, but a little caveat to that is the rating agencies actually look at the percentage based on the GAAP fund balance, not the
Right, right.
Budgetary one, but, but yes.
But it should affect those numbers as well.
It would affect those numbers as well. I just don't know what those numbers, percentages would be.
Chris, Ellie.
Thank you, John, for reading my mind. That was exactly my question.
So is there any downside, I guess, to moving the deficit over to the public safety sales tax? And what are the scenarios if the referendum passes or doesn't? Like, how does, I assume no problem if it passes, but if it doesn't, does that put us in any sort of?
So this, these numbers are budgeted with no effects of the referendum, so it pretty much assumes that it's where it is now. If the referendum passes, it would only help. By, so we budgeted that way on purpose.
I think there is a downside, which is, you know, not to dredge up an old argument, but the reason that we were talking about $15 million for the JANO replacement is because that was the estimate from the technology committee when they put the plan together. And I know that Barry Dunn has come out with other numbers, but we have not done the RFP. We do not know what the cost is going to be for what program we're going to settle on. So if we spend this savings in the public safety sales tax now to relieve some of the pressure on the general fund, which I'm not saying is a bad thing, but if we spend it now and then the JANO replacement comes in higher than the $2 million that we've already budgeted, we have no other money then to cover that, and it'll have to come from somewhere. So, you know, again, I think that's just a gamble to be thinking about as to where that money's going to come from, and I don't think we should be assuming JANO's going to come in, whatever we pick, at a very low price tag. I just, I just don't see that happening.
Dan?
That's kind of where I was leading, is the projects that we have that's earmarked for, and what that does. And, you know, we've always talked about our facilities, and, you know, some of our facilities are impacted by this fund, and whether we have new or not, they still need maintenance, so we want to be really careful. So that was just my thought.
All right, this is, I appreciate this conversation. Did any of y'all ever think you'd be talking this deep, except maybe you two, about fund balances? I sure didn't. So I can maybe put forward a proposal if that's not untoward for somebody who's running the meeting. It's not really how Robert's Rules of Order is supposed to work, but, okay. What if we sort of split the difference and we moved $1 million down, and we still kept some of the debt up, but $1 million down would still give us $1.4 million sort of extra, extra cushion in the public safety sales tax fund balance. It would get us a little bit above that 25% as JJ said, and give us some, if, I mean, if we keep budgeting a half a million dollars in the red every year, that'll give us two more years, although we're about to make decisions that maybe we'll just wipe it up this year, I don't know. But does that, that's my proposal. And we're not voting tonight, it's just a very thumbs-up-y type, this is a conversation. Okay, so that is, the thought of the board is that unless you see some real reason not to take a million, move a million dollars of that, that loss down to public safety. Okay, so that's, conversation is done, and now we could actually talk about things, I guess, that maybe we want to spend money on. I do have one note. Mr. Owen could not be here today, but he wanted me to say that he, I did promise him that I would tell him, I would, I would say his thoughts on the budget. His priorities are to fund and fully increase include the PD and the Circuit's clerk's office. He would like to see a tightening of the state's attorney's office and the sheriff's office, specifically the sheriff and the jail, because he, when we consolidated the jail, there was a conversation about that potentially consolidating staff, and he would like to see some belt tightening there. So I wanted to share that because I did tell Donna I would share his thoughts since he could not be here today.
So we updated the numbers on the $1 million. So, we updated the numbers on the $1 million between the funds, and that would increase it to 27%. The total combined deficits would still be the 2.5 million, but just which funds it's, it's in would change.
Okay. I will remind you, we just did that beautiful work. Anything we decide today will lower that 27%.
Okay.
No, we, we don't have to stay at anything. Our policy is that we won't go below 16.7. That is the lowest recommended policy. Our goal is to be at 25 because, as JJ said, there's like a, that is something that is considered, that's like considered like a threshold, if that makes sense.
Before we get into the budget requests, there are two other items that we need to discuss on the revenue side of special revenue funds that could also affect the general fund. During the legislative budget hearings, there were two fees that we talked about potentially increasing. And if we don't, the fund balances will start to drop. And so, that could also add to the, the fund balance deficit. So, we'll start there. The first one was the waste hauler license fee. So, currently, it's at $35. John had mentioned, in order to get the, it to be, the revenues to match expenditures, it would have to increase by 140, or up to $145. So, $110 increase. So, if we don't do that and fund balance will run out soon, we'll have about a roughly $10,000 cost that would need to be picked up from somewhere, which is most likely the general fund recurring. We don't have to do the $110 increase, we could work our way up, you know, do, you know, do 25 here, 25 another year. We could just pay for it out of the general fund, we could increase the whole thing. So, I'll throw that out there for discussion, but that could affect this. And then the other one is the GIS fee. Based on the cost study, it's currently at $15. Based on the cost study to get where we need to be, it should be about $25, based on number of documents we do per year. If documents go up and we have a big real estate boom, we could always readjust it back down later if, if we're running the fund balance up. But that's another one that we won't, if we don't increase it, we won't deplete the fund balance in that fund in '25, but in '26, we'll deplete it because we're, we're about $140,000 in the hole per year on that.
Eric, then Jen, then Ellie, then Jamal.
So, the question sometimes is, what does ELOC do? One of the things we did was this waste hauler license thing in ELOC. And we raised it from what was really small recently to this 35. I think that we, we had a couple of the haulers come in. There's a few with not too many trucks, there's a few with a lot of trucks. We know that Urbana just recently had a problem with getting recycling picked up and things. On some level, you don't want to make the waste haulers upset with you. I think you suggested it before I got to it, this incremental, that maybe 35 to 50, and then 50 to 75, and work it up to get to what we think is the point we need it to be, but not make increments like 110. The GIS, I think that's a service that everyone is very happy to pay for. I have no problem seeing that go up. It's, you know, it costs money to do it. It's super useful in going from what you suggested, 25 to 35? Or no, 15 to 25. I think that's a no, yeah, exactly. I think that's a no-brainer. So, that's my input, and a little less on what ELOC gets to do sometimes.
The stack is Jen, Ellie, Jamal.
Travis, forgive my ignorance. I know this was explained to us before, but a lot of life has happened between those two things. So, the trash hauler license is, is for every truck that any trash hauler has?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Every truck has to have the sticker.
Okay.
It's not one per company.
And it's once a year?
Yes.
Maybe I'm way off base here, this tax-and-spend liberal kind of thing. But, $140 doesn't seem like a ton of money for the cost of doing business. You know, we, at my house, pay like $35 a month just to get our trash hauled, and we're one of, you know, a gazillion people. So, I hear what Eric's saying about the incremental. Either way, I do think that we need to, I'm very much in favor of raising that, same with GIS.
Ellie?
Jen asked my question, and Jamal had her hand up first.
I don't mind going up on the GIS fee, that seems reasonable. I guess my concern with the waste hauler, if we jump immediately to 140, is that they will just put that, pass that burden along to their consumers. And if taxes are going up everywhere and inflation is going up everywhere, I don't think that we should jump it up $110. I'm not opposed to it going up some amount, but I think if we do 110, then everyone's garbage bill is just going to also go up after now. So, I don't know. I don't know if that's what they'll do, but that's just what I think they'll do.
Okay, just point, one point of information that I want to say is, I do know that this body cannot make tonight the decision about the waste hauler. And I doubt very much we could do the GIS. I was on ELOC, right? So, what we have to decide is how we're going to budget it. So, to some degree, what we're trying to do here is be predictive of a process that's coming. So, we could either, I, I just want to say this, we could either just be like, eh, we, we don't, we think it's, we're going to do it all and budget it like that. Or we could say, we want a true budget, like where we are right now, and then we'd have to put a hundred, another 150K deficit on the, on the fund. But I, I think this is a good conversation, but I just want, I don't want us to get too far into the weeds because we literally cannot decide that tonight. We just have to decide, like, to some degree, like, where are we putting that risk on the budget? That said, 47 people raised their hands all at once. So, I, I think you were first, and then maybe Brett was second, and then I think Beth was third, and I, but I could also be wrong because, yeah, I, okay.
I, I wonder if a lot of us were about to make the same comment, that my bill keeps going up every year anyway, for my trash hauling. So, I don't know that that would make a difference, but I, I feel like to Dr. Fortato's point that I'd be more comfortable budgeting this. If, if Eric thinks that there's going to be pushback and that's not going to pass ELOC, then I would be more comfortable treating this like it's not something that we're going to see.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's nothing. That's like maybe 10 cents a person extra at the most. I mean, what we, what the people here pay is nothing compared to other big cities around us, or Chicago, or anything like that. We are cheap on that, and that's almost nothing we're going to do. And I don't know if this is, I can do this or not, but can we get a straw poll roughly on what people might think about raising up to the full amount the next time around?
We could. What do folks think about raising?
Just to help budget it, you know?
Yeah, what is, what do folks think about raising it all up at once? Yeah? Okay. All right. Beth, Jen?
So, while I, I don't think that 110 is a unreasonable call, I do think you will get pushback if you try to go for the whole amount. 110 divided by five, if you go five years, it's 22 bucks a year. I think that would probably be acceptable. I think that would probably be likely to pass in tandem with a $10 fee increase for GIS. And, yes, I'm going to say GIS, not GIP. And it seems like it would be more palatable to all involved.
I know that when we talked about this at the budget hearings, there was some question about like what surrounding counties charge. And I know I didn't look into it, I'll follow my sword, I didn't do that. But do, do we know what other counties charge? We don't?
I think John might. And I, I don't think that our 145 is out of line with what he saw in varying counties. He's also a pretty practical guy, and he's, he's bringing this forward. I'll also just remind everyone, you know, what this fund pays for right now is the hazardous waste and electronic recycling events. So, just to keep that in mind, because I think that as a body, you don't want those to go away. So, if you don't raise it, which is fine, when we come back and say, well, the fund's out of money and it's for this, I feel like everyone here is going to be like, oh, we'll find the money, let's do it, we're doing that thing. So, just a little domino piece there. And I would also caution against making it too many years of a slow increase because we're going to be out of whack within two years again, anyway. So, you know, I think maybe like two years would be the max of the gradual that you would do if you're going to do gradual, and then knowing that in two years, it's going to need another reassessment for an increase to, to meet market demands of what we have.
Jenny, and then Diane?
Well, if you double 35, you get 70, and then you double 35 the next year, you're at, I mean, you double 70, you're at 140, so, just saying, if you want to bring that forward.
Diane?
I think we should go ahead and budget the GIS at 25 and let ELOC come back and tell us the amount on the other, then we can roll from there.
Okay, so, could you say that again, please?
I think we should go ahead and budget GIS at 25. That's very reasonable in a scheme of things. And I think because the other is basically left up to ELOC and what they feel is fair, then they come back with a number and we use that to budget with, knowing that there will be an increase.
Okay. I don't know, timing-wise, I think we need to make a decision tonight. I, I mean, personally, if, if you would like to know my opinion, which apparently I'm giving a lot today, I think we should just budget the 10K out of the general fund. It's $10,000. And then, if ELOC comes up with a structure to give us relief, then that money just falls back into the general fund, and that's great. Because it's not only ELOC has to make the decision, we have to vote on it. I'm not entirely sure when we do those fees, you know, like when we collect them. Do you know what I'm saying? There's a lot of issues there, so. So, what Diane's proposal, mine and Diane's combined proposal, is that we do not budget the 140K out of the general fund, but that we do budget the 10K out of the general fund balance to make, is that, does everybody follow that? All right. And ELOC now has a lot of input from this board to help them make their decision. All right, anybody against that proposal? All right. And I believe that means now, okay, so we've solved the fund balance issue, we've dealt with revenue, and now we're moving on to unfunded expenditures.
Okay, so, this.
It's not on.
Testing, 1, 2, 3. All right, can you highlight what we've accepted?
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, I thought we just added money for.
I don't know what we've accepted so far.
This, this chart is expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
And we were just talking about revenues. We haven't even made it to the chart yet.
Yeah, thank you.
We're about to.
So, this is, this is the same spreadsheet that I sent you a month or two ago. These are all of the requests, including the things that we have repeatedly talked about doing if we get the public safety sales tax increase. The ones over here in the column of board identified, that came up during the budget hearings, someone on the board shouted out and said, I really care about this, I want to make sure we talk about this at the Special Finance Committee. So, I think the first thing we want to do is look through this list and make sure there is nothing else that you feel we absolutely need to talk about because when we're done with that, we're going to narrow it down to the ones that have only been identified as special interests by a board member. And those are the ones that we're going to focus on right now because this is a very long list.
So, I have a request. Can you possibly make those words bigger? Like, a lot, lot, lot bigger? And then, can, we all take like two minutes?
Yeah.
And look at it, and if you want an X next to something, this is your chance to get an X. If there's not an X, we aren't talking about it. Does that, does that seem to make sense? Like, we are only going to talk about, this is the whole list of things that everybody wanted. We are not planning to speak on all of them tonight. We would be here very long, right? So, if there is something that does not have an X and you really want it to, please say so. I mean, I guess later on, you could come back, but we all might look at you like this.
And this is not new, this is, this is the stuff that you've had for a while.
Right. Everything that has an X is stuff in the budget hearings that somebody in this body said they wanted to discuss.
Could we please see, I'm sorry, I have to see the.
Department?
Thank you.
No. No, we'll, we'll do screen by screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we made it big, so now it can't be the whole list.
So, I'll move it in a few seconds. Yeah, anything, anything here that does not have an X already.
The health insurance premium and improved family access is what we've discussed with the Labor Committee, correct?
Yeah, but I mean, we can't do that without the tax increase.
Okay, but we want to discuss it, we put an X by it?
But to discuss it, to include it in this budget that is currently being drafted without the public safety sales tax increase.
Okay, got it.
We'll, we'll come back to all of this. If we get the tax increase, we will resurrect this entire list and have this conversation again.
Okay, got it.
We've got Jamal, and then Ellie.
I just have a question. Doesn't the Veterans Assistant Commission have to be included in our budget? Or, I'm confused.
So, we currently have them in there for what they've asked for, for '25. So, that's already built into everything that we have. This is the reference to when they start asking for more. And, and they're being very patient and very generous with us right now. They obviously know the referendum's on the ballot, they know we're trying to come up with a solution. So, we have been able to work with them again for '25, and they're not increasing the budget. I think it actually decreased slightly for this year, but I, I think that, you know, that's not going to be the conversation for the, the '26 budget.
To your point, though, Jamal, if halfway through next year, they're out of patience and they ask us for that, we'd have to give it to them. This is reflective of what they want, but that is something we should all keep in mind, that there is a potential $750,000 liability against our general fund that just exists, right? And we could not say no. But this is reflective of what they've actually asked for in 2025. We've got Ellie, then Diane, and then Madam Chair.
The market salary adjustments for staff, is that for the entire county?
Well, for the county, not RPC.
Okay.
That is that, the study we've been doing. Diane, Madam Chair.
It could just be me, I'm a little bit confused here. So, we are discussing the items with the X?
We're going to.
Only discussing the items with the X at this point?
Well, are you adding X's to anything is the question right now because then we're only going to talk about the items with an X.
The X's are things that y'all said you wanted to talk in the budget. So, this is like, is there anything, I think people are trying to decide, do they want to X anything else?
Yeah, okay.
Samantha?
I was thinking about the juvenile delinquency prevention efforts. What is that all detailed?
Well, again, that's on there because if we get the public safety sales tax increase, the contribution from the tax to JD's, to delinquency prevention would increase. And we would need to talk about what we were going to do with that money.
Right now, we have that much money, it's already budgeted. If we get the tax, we would get, because this body has committed that 5%, we would get an additional $350,000. And then, we would have to have a discussion, how are we going to spend it?
Me. So, we already have an HR generalist, but this would be to keep it on?
I would want to make it a supervisory role that supervises. I would want to make it a supervisory role that supervises, hopefully, what you would allocate, which would be to HR associates. And so it would, the position would need to be upgraded. And again, that's if we get the tax increase request.
Okay, okay. So it doesn't take away the HR person that we have?
No, so that's what, over here, right, so like-
I'm going to catch on to this eventually.
And clearly, you all did not look at the spreadsheet when I sent it to you two months ago, I'm just, you know, that is very obvious, very obvious.
Au contraire, we wanted a hard copy.
That helped, the drag you just did, I appreciate that.
So we're giving up the department for a moment, but you can see again, things that we had talked about as potential expenditures if we got the tax increase.
Jamala?
I would like to talk about a probation officer, because I remember Shannon's request. I don't have a preference on DUI or just regular officer. Do we have to decide? Can we just give her officer and then she does what she wants to do with it, if we decide to give her an officer?
Yeah, I mean, to be perfectly blunt, if we give people personnel money, they could do kind of whatever they want with it. That's not completely true, but kind of.
All right, anything else on this page? I'm going to scroll down.
Going once, going twice. Yes, sorry, Ms. Carter.
I would like to see another public defender felony attorney at it. But we have already budgeted for the expert witness though, right? Okay.
No. Just for this year. This is next year's budget, we have not done it. That's one of the, that's why it has an X, we have to decide.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I thought I saw a hand, did I dream that hand? Scroll. I think there needs, I thought there should be an X by the supervisor of assessments Or if there's not, I'm now saying I'd like an X.
We have which are recurring and which are one-time, Mark?
Yeah, the first J is one-time, K is recurring.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Yes.
The $16,000 for the state's attorney attorney, that's a salary increase, I assume?
I think it's some kind of budget shortfall that she's identified.
Was that the one that was going to be mostly paid for by a grant, but we wanted part of it?
So I think 80% is the grant, and this is the other 20%, yeah.
I would request an X by that.
The last item that I think you didn't see was the treasurer deputy collector request.
Oh, okay, Ms. Carter and Mr. Storey.
I just feel so bad that this has been a request for three years. I don't know how we can make this happen, but we definitely need to right this wrong.
I mean, we can make it happen with the tax increase.
Outside of the public safety sales tax, what else can we do? Is there any other options?
No.
We could deficit budget. I mean, that's the option. Are you, would you like an X?
I would, I'd like an X.
Mr. Storey?
Thank you, I was going to do the same thing, but I'd like to go up a screen or two to the PR, to the K-9.
Explosive or narcotics? There's this one, and then there's this one.
That, oh geez, wow. Well, let's do one of them and maybe the sheriff will find a talented dog.
Beth?
I believe we borrow the university's explosive detecting dog. So if you had to pick one, I would pick the narcotics because we're losing that dog.
Okay. Narcotics.
I was just going to say, with the current problems of narcotics in our community, we need a narcotics dog badly.
Okay, anything else? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Brett, I didn't see you.
That's fine, just one quick question. So everything we've voted for to spend is deficit spending, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make sure, yes.
Now, let me be clear, the X does not mean we have said we're going to. The X just means we're going to decide if we're going to. We're still deciding on a list. All right, going once, going twi- Ellie?
Clarification question, from this list, don't we also have about $500,000 of ARPA that we can allocate?
We have an ARPA conversation to have, we, I don't, we have about, okay, let's scroll through this and then we can just jump and look at the ARPA screen, no? It's not going to really help much with this. And also, ARPA is one-time money, like we can't be-
Right, but there's some one-time expenses on this list.
Right, but like, I think maybe we need to first narrow down what we want to talk about, and then-
Yeah. We add the ballistic vest since it is a one-time and it's only 10 grand.
The ballistic vest. Okay. Are we good? Going once, going twice. All right, point of information, I just, I'm not contagious with anything, I just have tremendously bad allergies. If any, I'm out of cough drops. If anybody has a cough drop and would like to pass it to me, it might make our meeting better. Because at some point, in other words, JJ might end up sharing it. I thought I brought more, but I did not. Mostly because I haven't been to my house in like this century. Thank you greatly. Okay, thank you, thank you, I think I'm good. Oh, wow. Ooh, I get to decide which flavor I want. Thank you all very much. All right, let's just take these as they come. ARPA-funded digitization project, wait, why is this on the, oh, because there's an overrun.
So I think that, I mean, we need to go look at the ARPA stuff to talk about this.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, okay. The, this is what's coming back to us over here under reallocate.
Oh, thank you.
So we've got about $426,000 coming back. For a variety of reasons, they didn't spend it all, there was a little bit left, you know, this emergency management thing was for that emergency response to asylum seekers, and we didn't need it. This item here is a designation of money that we set aside for just additional professional costs that might come through the broadband project. And we have not needed to spend any of it up until this point. We could leave it there, but it seems unlikely that we're going to spend it. We could remove it, move it out of the broadband category, or we could just shift it and add it to the pool for volo to support again more broadband installation.
Just a quick, on the other screen, can we total up what our X-ed items are?
Oh, yeah.
Just so we know what our running total is here. And then I'm just going to point out that a long time ago, I said we should just leave the safe in the County Plaza building because it cost almost a half a million to take out. So if we have a half a million dollars' worth of stuff, that, we should have just left the damn safe door there, it was pretty anyway.
Wait a minute.
For the square footage we got, it's the most expensive square footage, I think, in the county right now.
Okay, so it's 4.8 million for the one-time startup, and it's 3 million of recurring
I'm sorry. That seems high. Oh, you're right, you're right.
Do I do it then?
Good point, Samantha's correct. Just because they're still on there. Thank you. Because I was like, that cannot be 4.8 million, I'm not good, I'm not a mathematician, but I'm, I could tell that that can't be.
One time is 1.7 million.
All right, so can everybody see that?
Recurring is, I can't read it from here either, so.
So one time is 1.7, recurring is 950,000.
Okay. And real quick, this doesn't discount the other ones that don't have an X?
It does, this is only these numbers.
Right, but it doesn't take away that some of those other requests are still there? Or are we saying we're ignoring the other requests, we're only look, we will only consider anything with an X?
We are only considering X things tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah. For the 2025 budget, we have narrowed the discussion to these things. Okay, back to A, A for ARPA-funded digitization project. This is the overrun of the digitization project that we currently have going, correct?
Yes, we've talked about this a couple times. I would make the suggestion that we deal with this in the ARPA conversation, and whatever ARPA funds we can put towards this, that's the extent of what we can put towards this
Okay, we're having a lot of side conversations, so I'm going to bring it back. Does anybody disagree with waiting on this one until we get to the ARPA page? Okay, we're going to wait on that until we get to the ARPA page. Next, digitization, that was not part of the original project, that is for the Circuit Clerk's Office.
We're waiting on a new quote for this one from the company that we've done the digitization project through already, so we don't have an updated estimate on what this would cost. Just update on that.
Beth?
Is our gut feeling that it's going to be more or less than what is currently listed?
I think we'll be lucky if it comes in at 200,000. The quotes seem to just increase every six months. The longer you wait, the more expensive it gets, and I think she did her quote last year, so.
Beth?
Is there any chance that there would be leftover money from the overrun that could be put towards this?
Well, we don't, no.
Yes?
Can we put this on the ARPA just page, so to speak?
We can move it to the ARPA conversation.
Yeah, I would move that we do that.
I think doing this, because it's a one-and-done, I would be pretty supportive of it because it just, this is the last of her digitization, right?
Oh, no, we will never be done digitizing.
No, I mean, like, of the old stuff. No?
No, no, no.
Never mind then.
This is like starting digitiz, like, this is, was not part of the ARPA. So this is like the starting digitization run two, post-ARPA universe. Mr. Farney?
Digitization is something that'd be really nice to do, and you do that when you have the funds that are not going to impact direct services to the public. We have other things on this list that impact our community every day. So I think this one needs to wait until we have the funds to do it.
Mr. Storey?
I respectfully disagree with my learned colleague. I think that if we don't start down the path and we don't keep on the path, we will be, we will fall terribly behind and it will cost us a lot. And it's, it's one of these mundane sorts of things. And Circuit Clerk McGrath made a very good case of the problems that she's encountering right now with storage of records. And if there's one thing that we could do to kind of help the courts be more, move things along, it's kind of getting things digitized so that all those records and stuff can kind of move like, like they, excuse me, like they need to.
Leah, Beth, after.
Okay, I have a question because I have apparently confounded this with a different project in my mind. Is this literally just for like evidence and that sort of stuff? Is this that digitization? Because I thought-
No, that was, you're probably thinking of the state's attorney's evidence management system.
Okay, okay. So this is like the old records that we have to keep?
This is court records, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I, in that case, I'm leaning more, I agree with JJ. I see your point, Dr. Storey, but at the same time, I mean, this is, this is rocking a hard place time. And we need to realize or really remember that, like, maybe we are going to eventually lose some of the older records because we didn't get the public safety sales tax passed. I don't know, I don't know. But we have to keep our services for our people.
I'm going to side with Mr. Storey. It is not just a question of, oh, this is something nice to do. This is a question of reclaiming space in the-
This is a question of reclaiming space in the courthouse, which you will recall, we need space in the courthouse for personnel and we need space in the courthouse for a new courtroom. And this, these records are currently taking up available space, not just livable space, workable space, but storage space, all of which could be repurposed, not to mention, I don't know how much they're paying to store it off-site. That's, storage units are rental, that's cost recovery. Not to mention that these records aren't getting any younger, and they are not stored in optimal conditions, and they are deteriorating. And losing that kind of data is, is irreplaceable. That is not something that you can just go down to the store and buy more of. That is, that is a single-source, irreplaceable, deteriorating source of information that we are bound by law to keep.
I am growing alarmed by the number of cough drops I got and what that indicates how long y'all think this meeting is going to be. I will now say, the stack is Jenny, and then Chris, and then Jamala. No, I'm sorry. Yes, that was the order, that was the order.
I guess my, am I getting too deep into this if I say, what kind of records are we talking about? Because I know that it's got a lot of older things that are stored, but the things that are pertinent to current cases are typically created digitally, wouldn't they be? Or is there still going to be a lot of, like, or are they, you know, scanned in as they're done? This is, we're dealing with old records that are, and not as much for current cases, in which case I would lean where JJ is leaning and say that if it's not providing direct services or directly relevant to a case that's happening, like, within the last two years or so, then to me, I feel like this is not going to be benefiting people as directly as some of these other items.
Myself, Chris has already spoken on this matter, Jamala hasn't, so Jamala, Chris.
Didn't matter to me. I think I'm going to support JJ. I think most of the records that Susan discussed were in the basement, and so I don't know that we would be saving space. I've been in the basement, no one goes down to the basement unless you're looking for records. I don't, I guess I won't say that point, but I think it'd be unfortunate if we lost some records, but I can't imagine, I think she said some of the records are from when the county first was established, so unless you're a historian and you're doing research, I can't imagine that a lot of people are looking for those records either, unfortunately, so.
Again, Mr. Store, you're going to put, be put in purgatory. The gents, I leave it to you to decide.
I side with JJ on this in terms of, when you have money, you can do it. Also, I'm just Googled, there's grants available, we have a grant writer. We should be spending our money right now on the things that we need, need, need right now, and hopefully find money elsewhere for the things that we need to do, but, you know, it's, it's putting curtains up when the house is on fire, like, it.
Jen?
I was going to say, we can't serve soup from an empty bowl. So, we're, yeah. But I, I agree with Chris, I think that our history is really important and having access to it would be amazing, and also, I'm looking at this list and I'm thinking, like, sorry, you couldn't get your, your, what's it called, best officers? We needed to digitize some things. It's, we have to prioritize at this point, like, hopefully we can get more revenue, hopefully the Public Safety Sales Tax passes and we can fund all of these things, which are very needed services. But right now, we're already at a deficit before we even look at this list.
Chris, I know you, Mr. Thorson, and then Mr. Store.
Before we get to Chris, during discussion like this, can you call the question?
Mr. Store, I mean, yeah, eventually, we might get to that point, yes. I, I would tend to agree with you, but I'm, I'm trying to be non-dictatorial. Mr. Store?
Because of something that came up more than a year ago regarding drainage districts, I spent far too much time learning about drainage districts, and some of the drainage districts were formed by court order, and the legal basis for those drainage districts lies in some of these historic documents. I don't think that we want to kind of jeopardize that, those important legal entities.
Then?
A history here, at some point in the back of my mind, I thought we had started digitization over at the courthouse.
Yeah.
And so, some of these things are done, it's not way, way back.
Oh, no, no. It's better than that. Some of this is salvaging digitization that was done on microfilm.
There you go.
That's part of this project, because the microfilm is crumbling and cracking.
Okay, I believe we've heard a lot about digitization. There are three options on the table, I'm going to say each of them, and you're going to thumbs it, and other people are going to help me determine. The first option is we punt this whole conversation over to ARPA. You don't have to, all right. All right, we've got. No, you have to pick one of the three. Punt it to ARPA. The options are punt it to ARPA. Okay, I also want to say this, we are not saying we're banishing this to the dustbin of history. What we're saying is, this is a, do we want to fund it for 2025? I'm going to say that again. All of these discussions are simply, do we want to fund it for 2025? Not like, do we want to fund it forever? Do we want to fund it for next year? Okay, yes.
I just want to make a very quick point. I also want to remind everybody that nothing that we're deciding tonight is a statement on how we feel about elected officials or their budgets. This is working with what we have.
Right.
And I still have the most utmost respect for all of them, I just can't fund everything.
Okay. So, we have three people who like the idea of punting it. The options are punt it, fund it this year, do not fund it this year. Okay? All right, punt it, we have three. Fund it this year, we have two. Four, three. Do not fund it this year. All right. Mr. Store, I appreciate your passion. Next, secondary trauma counselor.
This came up in the legislative budget hearing.
Oh, yeah.
It was like a mid-conversation and someone suggested it, and I think someone else was like, yes, I definitely want to talk about that at the Special Finance Committee, so that's why it's on here. There's, I have done no research, I am completely guessing at the cost, there has been no prep work done into any of this because it was a very spur-of-the-moment thing.
Should we skip over this one until Steve's back in the room?
No.
Or?
I mean, we can, I'm sorry, we can. This one, I'm sorry, I was like, no, that was terrible. This, I will say, I, I, I don't know that he would have, to be honest. This was because I said, we should have somebody in-house or contracted service to deal with the tra, to help our employees deal with the various traumas that they face, whether, right? Whether they are going to roadside deaths or working in, you know, JDC, there's a lot of, we have a lot of very traumatic jobs. I definitely did not put this on this list. One of y'all did that. I think that this is, I think that is something that we should do, but I do think we would need to research it, and, yes. Ellie, Eric?
Yeah, I think that's what I was going to say, I absolutely love the idea of having a person like this, but I don't think we need to do it in '25 because we need a little time to figure out the best way to do it.
I think we have to focus some money to our grant specialists because I think this is something that we can get a grant for.
Right.
And not fund it this year out of this fund.
Jenny, Jen?
Does the county insurance offer EAP? Mic turned off.
Yes, we do, yeah.
We contract for this at my job when things happen, and it's great to have that option. But I do think that we would have to have a lot more fleshed-out plan, and maybe it's just not for this budget cycle. I think it's a great idea, we have a lot of employees that deal with a lot of traumatizing events, and we need to take care of our people, maybe next year.
And this, this point of information, this is not directed at you, Mr. Thorson, it is, however, directed at Ms. Locke. If in one of these meetings, you say, hey, I just saw that there is a grant for this, you are then contractually obligated to email our grant coordinator about what you have found.
That happened in the past.
Dang it. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody who is saying, oh, we now have the email up there so you can do so. I'm just saying, it was in a meeting like this that we literally found that gun safety grant, and then it became a real thing. So, you sent something to her, she just writes the grant, you know, so, like, okay. I am not seeing anybody who is saying, I don't know who put this on the list, but, okay. We're moving on. Probation officer. Yes?
I don't know if we can afford it, but I do support it. I remember Shannon's compelling request. I don't remember the exact numbers, but I know that her probation officers are all overworked. I don't know if it was double the caseload, but it was a lot. So I support this for those reasons. I don't know if we can afford it, but I do support it.
Anybody else?
I can, this is Chris, I concur.
But you raised your hand first. I, okay, we'll, we'll outpull at each other, we're all very Midwestern. I agree with Mala, it was, if we could find the way to afford this, this is really important because even if we would give Shannon the two officers she asked for, we'd still be above the number of clients per probation officer. Like, it was so dire that she's like, just give me two, I really need four, but give me two. So even if we could give her one, could we punt discussion of this until we talk about, and maybe knock out some other ones that maybe we're all going to say no to, or yes to, or have a better idea, but like, I, I really want this one, but I don't think we have it.
Okay, really quickly, just one point of information, I have realized something. We can't just add the two columns because the recurring costs are the portion of the other one that is recurring. So, the full bore of what we're discussing is only the first column. Okay. In my mind, I was adding them, maybe it was just me. Raise your hands again, Leah, JJ, or Erin, one of you two? I'm so sorry. That's bad sharing.
I was going to ask if we could put this one as a maybe so that we can come back to it towards the end.
Seems like we have a general consensus that there's interest in it, but let's see what's going on. We're going to put a pin in it, unless somebody else is against that. Yes?
My question is more logistical. Is the current deficit at the top changing as we say no? Like, we're wa, okay.
Hold on, hold on. The deficit is not going down.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, no. We are 2.5 million.
That's the current deficit.
In the red.
Is the co, I guess I should say, is the cost of where we would be over, is that reflected somewhere that we could?
It's going up every time you add something.
Okay.
Yeah, it is updating in real time.
So that's going up when we say yes?
Yes.
But is there somewhere that says, oh, this is how much over we're going to be if we?
2.5 million.
Right.
But for the, I don't know, for the things that are, like, if we?
Yes.
Yeah, the 2.5 will continue to rise every time we add something.
Yeah, it's happening in real time, is what she's saying.
I think what I was looking for was?
There's also a running total right there as well.
Yeah, that's, I think I was looking more for like what the total of what we're adding is versus the total deficit.
So these are based on the three funds?
Okay.
What you're adding.
Okay.
But as a whole lump sum, still all merged together.
Okay.
It's 2.5 million right now.
This is not a invitation to spend more money, I just am reminding everybody that 2 million of that is the planned expenditure for Jano. The other, everything after the two is the structural deficit. Okay?
I actually would support having this probation officer. There's a lot going on in our community right now, and that, that would probably make a larger impact overall to take care of this. We're talking one person once again versus two or three or four. And I know that we need to hold the line on staff because that tends to be a large item, and I, it sounds bad, I know everybody's overworked, but we all know that that's the biggest line item in our budgets, so we need to be careful. But we also have some items and some laws that has put us in a position that actually requires us to maybe reevaluate or adjust how we think about adding to our staff line. So I would support this one.
Okay. We have three options. Wait until the end and come back to this. Fund it. And don't fund it. I think, I think fund it is.
We don't have any money.
I, I, I hear you, and it's recurring, I, I do hear you.
No, we don't. We don't have any money.
No, I hear you, I, I do hear you, and I actually, if, if I was running this meeting, it'd be real short. Because I'd be like, nope, and then we'd leave. But, not quite, but, that, but I think this is a very useful conversation and it's important, and the board, it, it was a pretty clear majority, said fund it.
I want to change my vote. Michelle's right, we don't have the money. I would love to fund it, I think it would actually save us money, but I, I want to change my vote, I don't want to fund it.
You want to change your indication, because we're not actually voting on anything. All right, one more time, punt, I'm, I'm not going to punt anymore. All right, punt, we've got two punters. Ellie's really into punting. Two. Fund it. Yeah, we're still on the same one, because? We're still on probation officer. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Don't fund it. One, two, three, four, five, we're still there, six, six, so we're still there. All right.
Are we funding it with the general fund or the Public Safety Sales Tax?
General fund because, at least this is, I leave that decision up to y'all, but I would say general fund because right now we do not have personnel except that one person on Public Safety Sales Tax. If we pass the Public Safety Sales Tax increase, we would be moving a significant number of people, but then again, I doubt very much we'd be moving a probation officer. What we'd want to do is move a whole body of people, so like, all of corrections or all of field officers. It's a lot easier for budgeting purposes than having to track, like, in one department, one person's over here and one person's over there. At some point, we have to make Travis's life not totally miserable. Okay. Yes.
Sorry, to go back to the ARPA funding and one-time expenses, would it make sense to look at all the one-time expenses together? And so we can kind of decide what we're spending down in the ARPA first before we then decide if we want to take more one-time expenses out of the general fund?
All right, y'all want to do the one timers first? All right, we're going to do the one timers first. The next one is the door. Yes, the Priya door. Yes.
As a reminder, if you don't remember this discussion, this is for the Juvenile Detention Center. These are juveniles who are showering in a space where they can be seen by other juveniles. This is, to me, something that I think really needs to be addressed so that we are Priya compliant. If that has to come from ARPA, then I want it to come from ARPA, but I really want to get this done.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I think this is one of the situations where, this is where the surplus, or the fund balance in the Public Safety Sales Tax should be used. It's going for a building that was built with the Public Safety Sales Tax, and it potentially can save us from liability, that would be on our Public Safety Department, so I would support this, but I think it needs to come from Public Safety Sales Tax.
Chair Carter, did you have your hand raised? Mr. Store and then Mr. Wilson?
Very well said, Jenny, and I think that we should get this immediately from ARPA and use ARPA funds. They are our quickest source of funds.
Yes, okay. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I agree with this too, and you could come out of ARPA funds for 2024, correct? Doesn't have to wait till 2025?
Well, expediency isn't an issue because you control the public safety sales tax, so I wouldn't base the fund choice based on how fast you can do it.
In the amount of time it would take to purchase the doors, we will have a meeting and we could, we can appropriate it from fund balance. And it wouldn't be then on the 2025 budget, but it doesn't really, I mean, so it wouldn't be a deficit for the 2025 budget, but we would, it would still just be a deficit this year, right? Okay. So we have, one of these days, we're gonna have two options. I, I see nobody's saying not do it, everybody seems to want to do it. We have three options. ARPA, public safety sales tax this year, public safety sales tax budgeted in 2025. Those are the options that I saw. I didn't hear anybody say they want this just to fall to fund balance. Yes?
This, this is a capital expense, and it is the end of September, so the likelihood of us getting this equipment on-site by the end of the year is low.
Okay.
So I think that to save everyone unnecessary stress, we should just budget this out of public safety sales tax for next year.
Right. I mean, that is very true, because it, it won't, you can't do a capital project a year and, like, you just can't pay for it unless it's actually delivered here. Okay. Y'all good? Nobody's with the ARPA? Is there anybody ARPA-ing? All right, moving on. Expert witness money. Oh, wait, though, um. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the ballistics, we're doing the one time, but really quickly, I do want to say for that 120, it shouldn't calc, oh, it's the overall debt between the two funds. Never mind, moving on, ballistics.
I would say just put it right on for PSST for 25.
Seeing, is there any, anybody against that? PSST for 25. Okay. Next up. Narcotics.
Let, let's do narcotics for PSST, please. The, the K-9.
Okay, we have somebody who said, let's put it on PSST for 2025, and we had lots of murmuring. So we're gonna need to bring that murmuring either into the discussion in some way? Any actual responses? Okay, we got Diane, and then we got-
I, I think this is something actually you, you could possibly get grant money for. This, this would be something that maybe would be a little bit easier to get grant money for, actually.
Diane, you're right. Like, lots of professional football players have funds where like, they give grants for, in every state where they go, they give a dog away. Also, this former public defender hates police dogs. They, they activate falsely all the time, so I mean, no in this case regardless, but there are grants available.
Any other, outside of Ms. Locke just went on the record saying she hates dogs? Police dogs, I love pets. I don't know, that's how I heard it.
So let me just take this directly from the sheriff's documentation. The county does have two other K-9s that we can rely on, however, that only leaves two K-9s for four shifts. So basically, we're saying, dog, you have to work overtime. So I think considering all of our, our situation right now, I would not support doing this.
I am not going to email the grant lady, but I would, I just want the record to reflect. If that's a possibility, I do support maybe her looking into this, but for right now, I'm a no.
Let me be clear, I was only saying you had to email the grant lady if you found, like, some people, a specific grant that you thought fit it. Just saying in general, we think there's grants, is different than like, hey, I found this grant. Yes?
It says that we're replacing an existing dog, so maybe that, you know, we might be down a dog.
Well, I, I think there's the issue of other departments have dogs, and I think the replacement of this dog still leaves the other two that's in the documentation as available. Was how I read it.
Oh, okay. Concurrents. I don't see anybody protesting this. We're waiting on this one. Everything else is recurring. I want to say, just one last time for what it's worth, is recurring means forever unless you get rid of that person. That means you are not saying we're going to spend this on 2025. If, we, for two years in a row, had about a half a million dollar structural deficit, what we're saying is, whatever we do to this, that's going to continue to be the structural deficit in '26, '27, right? I just, I want to throw that out there. So this, like, you need to ponder this in your heart with a little more, even more pondering than the last set. Okay. Back up to recurring, and I have to admit, I'm, we did the trauma, I'm, forget which one we're on. Expert witness. Yes.
Point of information, Stephanie, so when we, when we vote on something that's a recurring expense, knowing that we already have a structural deficit, we know that it won't be fixed unless we either cut something or generate more revenue. Okay.
Correct.
And I just want to add to that, when we talk about cutting, 86% of our budget is personnel. We will only get out of a deficit if we lay off people and eliminate jobs.
Right.
So I understand everyone is overworked, but the more jobs we add now, the more jobs we're cutting when we get around to budget cycle next year.
Yes.
That being said, when it comes to expert witnesses, that could be more easily cut in the future if needed.
Yeah, in fact, I would almost push back on this as recurring. I mean, it is recurring in that it possibly should happen every year, but it's not recurring in that if we fund it this year, it has to hap, right? Yes.
I guess I, sorry, just to, I support funding this, is my follow-on to that.
Mr. Wilson, Leah.
Thank you. This particular line item can come out of ARPA, though. As it already has before, right? Yeah, but you, yes, you do. You have ARPA tagged for this year, but you can still spend it in the next two years.
We paid for some of it last year, we paid some of it, yes, we paid for, with ARPA. Okay, so we have the option of, do we want to put this into the ARPA conversation? Leah?
I'm gonna be the Krabby Patty on the room and just basically say that I'm gonna be voting no, or not voting no. I'm going to be indicating thumbs down on all of these recurring line items.
Diane?
Just as a note, the one thing that we have to keep in mind is, what are we statutorily responsible for? Those are the things that we need to be looking at. I mean, I know there are wants, and there are some pretty serious wants, but we still need to keep in mind what we're statutorily responsible for. That also comes with staffing, too. And, you know, where those cuts are made, or, or not made. You know, and sometimes you just have to bite off a little bit more because that's what's, what's necessary, but once again, a lot of times, what we're doing is, we're, we're beefing up, we're supporting something that is existing, not that they don't need help, but we just don't have the funds to help it. But once again, we need to look at what we are statutorily responsible for when we go to fund something.
Jen, Jen Jamala?
So I would argue that this expert witness expenditure saves money. Ms. Pollock was just here last week talking to us about how using the funds we allocated for her saved the cost and putting on of an entire murder trial. This is a very important thing for us to fund, however we can fund it. I also don't think that $35,000 was even enough this year, but whatever we can fund, we should put towards it. Just to, that statutorily required attorney we have to give, it sure is nice to actually put them on an equal playing field with, with the state's attorney who has experts available and a line. You know, they can, they can pay for things. So I would say, however we can fund this, I would love to.
Jennifer, I have a question for you.
When you were a public defender, did you guys use expert witnesses? When I was at the state attorney's office, the public defender's office didn't have access to expert witnesses. I support this, I would like to use ARPA money for this year while we still have the funds, and then hopefully the tax passes and we can use, have more funds next year. I do recall it saying that she was gonna come back later this year and ask us for more money. That happened. And, okay, so is $35,000 a realistic number?
I do believe that is what she asked for. Okay, so we have, yes, please do.
Yeah, so the low-level cases, absolutely not. We only had what was the statutorily required by the, that the court would provide, fitness and sanity. But the like, upper level where there was a real issue, the murder trials, like Ms. Pollock was talking about, yeah, we, I don't know that we had, I, I wasn't part of the financing, so I'm not sure how we paid for it, but we did have it. In my five years at that office, I can probably think of at least four cases where we used to, and, and that was above my pay grade, but I remember that that happened.
So can we be sure that this money is going to be spent by 2026, is my question, if we're gonna use ARPA funds? Because if we don't, we lose it. And this seems like a, a estimate and not a certainty.
What is the question? I can't hear.
Can we guarantee if we use ARPA funds that it'll actually be expended by 2026?
No, we're already making arrangements to make sure that doesn't happen this year. So no, we can't guarantee that it'll be spent.
All right. What? I, I have yet to see, she doesn't seem hard on not, just, you know what I'm trying to say. Yes.
I was gonna say, the only way I would support this one is if we were able to, like, Jamala proposed, out of ARPA funding. I, as much as I want to give the public defender everything she asked for, I am gonna be grumpy Gus with Leah and say, I can't thumbs up anything that is going to be a recurring cost. We don't have the money, where's it gonna come from?
Leah?
I also should clarify my stance on this. If the public safety sales tax does pass, I'm gonna be like, the first person revisiting the spreadsheet, right? Like, I want all of the stuff, but in good conscience, I can't do that to the county.
I, I, I believe that's the nebula hanging over all of us, right? I don't even know if that's the right word to use. All right, three options, I don't see anybody else. Oh, Ms., I'm sorry, Brett.
No, it's fine. Just kind of echo Leah down there, it's like, I'll be voting no for all these unless they're ARPA funds, and it's the ones we've already talked about, too, so. I have to leave about 30 minutes, I just want to say that.
So we've got three options. Move it to ARPA. Don't fund it. You know, I'm not counting, so I don't even know why I'm doing this. Sorry. Move it to ARPA. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Yeah, that's it. For form's sake. Don't fund it. Fund it from one of the fund balances. Okay. If I counted, then it would save time.
You are down at felony attorney.
Yes. That's the next one. Felony attorney, $130,681. Literally nobody's speaking to it, so we're gonna, one, two, three, move. Attorney. Okay. Oh, oh, I saw the chair first, and then Jenny.
Just knowing that she's understaffed, if I had to pick between the two, I would at least an attorney. I mean, one, I know felony attorneys are, are expensive, but we need, she needs that support in that office. I don't know. That's just my two cents.
Jenny?
I just wanted to see what the rest of that column says.
Where?
Cuts off for the attorney, previously listed on-
This is part of the additions if we get the public safety sales tax.
Thank you.
That we have discussed many times.
Yeah. Like, it's like a form, it, I mean, a, a, all of these in some way, shape, or form, would be impacted if we got public safety sales tax, but there's some on here that are specific requests from specific department heads or electeds that they asked about that tax, and this was part of, this is package. Okay, so Beth?
So I'm just gonna say, we are not the federal government, we do not have a license to print our own money, we cannot operate on a deficit. It's, it's, it does, people will come and collect on us. We don't have the ability to just pull money off the money tree in the backyard and, and fund these things. It's, it sucks, it's not pleasant, it's a reason we're trying to raise public safety sales tax, but it's either that passes or this doesn't happen. There is no, oh, let's just fund it out of deficit. We'll go broke, we will be in arrears, we will be, it will be bad.
Two options. Oh, Ms., Jeff?
I'm gonna agree with Leah. The only recurring cost that we've accepted so far, it looks like, is the probation officer, and we all agreed to that, but it, is that right? Is that the one that's recurring?
We all agreed to wait on that. We're, we are coming back to that at the end, was what we landed on that one.
Oh, this is GF means?
You said yes to that one.
We all agreed to fund that.
Right, we did, I'm sorry, my, I'm dreaming.
That's okay, we're all tired, I understand, no, no worries. But I'm, I'm gonna agree with Leah that if it's a recurring cost, I don't think there's any, other than we agreed to the probation officer, there's no justification why we could continue to add, to spend in the red structurally.
Before anyone makes the motion that I think we're inching to, where we would just discuss not going forward with any of these recurring costs, I will note that there's the state's attorney one, where the $16,000 is only the overage because of the grant. Ms. Reed wants to fund 80% through the grant, and that 16%, or that $16,000 is a 20% that would be funded through the general fund. So if we would get to the point where we pull the grumpy gusses, which I would say is a great idea, we should talk about that one separately.
Yeah, I hear you. Okay, so I believe we have two options on the table. Fund it? Don't fund it? Everybody good? Okay. Up next. Okay, so this next one, I wanna, I do want to speak to this briefly. This is happening, so I want to be very clear. A lot of these, it's like, if we say, like, to Liz, you're not, like, you don't have money, she's not doing this. He is converting two of his people- not, like, you don't have money, she's not doing this. He is converting two of his people, and he, I think he already has, or he's about to, to sergeant. Operationally, he just feels like he has to do it, because he has two shifts that do not have sergeant coverage, and he does not, and so, when I, so this is happening, the question on the table is, if we don't fund it, he is going to take it operationally from his existing staff and other budget. Do you see what I'm saying? So, I do wanna make that caveat that this is slightly different. This is literally, is happening, I think, as we speak. So, it's a question of, do, really, at the end of the day, it's like, it would impact him having, doing other things, right?
It still costs us money. It's still costing us that amount of money.
No, no, I know, and I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, what I'm saying is, he's doing it either way, yeah.
With his existing budget.
Right, with his existing budget. This would be restoring that existing budget, is what I'm saying.
Increasing the existing budget.
With what money?
Okay, so we've got Jenny, and then Samantha.
Well, that's what that FAR column means, right, is that we're saying, if we, if public safety sales tax passes, we'll be able to fund this out of that, but as it stands right now, I agree with what you're saying. He's gotta make this work within what he's got budgeted, because we shouldn't be budgeting more people when we're talking about cuts.
I think, if I'm correct, I recall asking him what he was gonna do, and he said that he's just not going to replace the sergeant, so he'll be able to fund this within his current budget.
Yeah, so, the people that he promotes, he would essentially not replace.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Samantha.
Thank you. I don't know, it just makes logical sense. If we're gonna discuss, if the public safety sales tax passed, we need to also discuss where there may be needed cuts. And I just think that isn't a conversation that we've had that should take place. I mean, it just makes sense. I don't know. To me, it needs to happen. So, if we're depending on the public safety sales tax and it doesn't pass, where, where, where those cuts need to be made, and how could those departments maybe communicate that to us?
I can speak to that briefly. So, I mean, we did this budget process on the assumption that we're not getting the tax increase, which is why everyone was told to budget flat. The only increase was contractual increases that we've already agreed to, whether that's through the FOP or through vendors, but everything else was kept completely flat, and all of the requests essentially are here. So, that was what we felt was the most responsible way to handle this year, because we don't know if we're getting the tax increase. However, if we don't get the tax increase next year, we're gonna have to pick a percentage, and it's gonna become with a budget that has cut this percentage, because there's no way that we can continue to do this. We are essentially floating ourselves for a year, trying, hoping that the tax comes through. If it doesn't come through, next year's budget cycle is gonna be really unpleasant.
I'm gonna correct you, we're floating ourselves for two years, because we did this last year as well.
Yes, true, yeah.
No. Any other discussion? I do wanna say, this has recurring and non-recurring. So, are we saying no on everything? Okay. I don't see anybody saying anything different. Moving on. $16,000 for the state's attorney that Jen for, no? Yeah, it was you, and it was one of you, already spoke about. Does anybody have anything to add?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is also the one, the grant that would be funding this, is how we get a drug court off the ground, so. No, to me, not a drug court, a mental health court off the ground, because this would be a person that would be using that grant. Am I correct?
I believe you're correct, although I do not know that we have the funding for all the other elements. I could be wrong about that, though, but I'm not entirely sure that if we do this, we're going to have a mental health court. I think, I think if we do this, it gets us a step closer.
This is to fund the existing position that does drug court out of the state's attorney's office.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing else.
Okay.
Can we split the funding here between ARPA for the one time and public safety sales tax?
Point of, it is all recurring?
No, it's a salary. It's a salary amount.
That's what I was saying before.
I mean, can we put, like, the fiscal year '25 salary on ARPA, and then?
I mean, it's not worth the headache for $16,000.
If you're putting part on ARPA and part here, we still have it, no matter what. So, you know, it's, it's kinda throwing a Band-Aid on it. I hear ARPA a lot here with a lot of these, and there's not that much money in ARPA. So, that's something we need to be cognizant of.
This is a question for you, Michelle. Is it possible that state's attorney's office could fund this person 100% on the grant? Obviously, they'd only be able to, no, because there's not enough work for it, or?
Because just the grant application has passed, and we've already been awarded the money, so.
So, most grants require some sort of match. I mean, I don't know the specifics of this match, but.
This one does not.
It does not? Oh, okay.
So, the 16 recurring is also because the grant is recurring, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the grant is indefinite, or you have to renew it every year?
Yes, we have to renew every year, but the message we continue to get is, if you don't embezzle the money and do something illegal, we will continue to give you the grant.
Cool. But, is it possible, since this is not a matching required grant, we could get the full amount in the future?
Yeah, the next time around, I would think every time we do this grant, we're gonna increase how much we ask for, and it's gonna overwhelmingly go to personnel every time.
Okay, then I'm cool with that.
I should say, too, and we said this a lot with the public defender was in the situation last year, like, this exact situation. If any of these grants fall through, then it would be back on this list for 2026. Anything we fund with grants, if it falls through, it's gonna be on this list. All right. I don't see anybody else. Everybody good? Okay. Next up is the.
So, I'm sorry, what is the decision? What are we doing?
Okay, do you want to fund it? Sorry, everybody wants to fund it.
And how?
How? Oh, okay. Do you want to fund it from the general fund? Yes. Yeah, because we're not gonna move personnel to public safety, and we, I think we had a compelling conversation about ARPA, so it's a general fund. Okay. Good. Next up is printers, and I'm going to give that to Jeff, because he has been the most wanting to speak on this one.
Thank you for all that attention. I thought JJ responded by, after working through the IT department first. So, the decision, it's not really a decision, because we're working through IT, is that correct, JJ?
That's our request. Our request is to allow us to try to remediate this through the countywide, very expensive Xerox contract that we have first, and if that does not work, then we have a bigger problem that probably impacts a lot of departments that we need to find a better resolution for, so.
To add on to that, I was one of the people that was also in agreement with this, is that it is the individual printer at your desk slippery slope, and if we give it to these people, you know what I'm saying, and if the problem is we don't have enough printing capacity, and we very well might have to come back for a amended, amended contract that caused, like, maybe they need another printer in there, but is it individual printers? Is that the right option, or is that putting a Band-Aid on a more structural problem with our printer contract? So, that said, Jeff, do you have a opinion on what we should do next?
Well, my opinion is to wait for the expertise, but I wanna take a nickel back. I thought on line item 55, since you already had the grant money, then you're still obligated to do the extra amount anyway. Is that true or not?
No, so, with that grant, we tell them, this, that grant is funding a position at 80%, because 80% of that person's time is gonna be on drug court, and that's all the grant's funding. So, either, you know, we have an employee who only works 80% of a full-time week, or the county supplements the 20%, so we have a full-time employee. Is that what you're? Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
I, could I ask for a little clarification? Because I was under the impression from state's attorney that, that they had to sometimes try to print things to the three different printers that they have in their office, because some of them are so unreliable that they can't print, or they might not print reliably, and this seems like a tremendous waste of paper, effort, and so forth. $12,000, if that's what's needed to fix it, I.
That's not the issue, though. The issue isn't the dollar amount. The issue is, again, we have a countywide contract with Xerox that we ask all the departments to participate in, and we, if we start putting desktop printers on one department, then you can't say no to all the other departments, and our IT department cannot support that level of tech work. And the whole point to moving to the Xerox contract was to get away from that concept, so. We will work with the state's attorney's office to get them another copier or two, if that's the issue. She has a lot of staff, so maybe they just don't have enough capacity in the machines that they have.
So long as we, so long as they don't have to run around.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, it seems like we have a consensus we're not doing this? Yes. Does anybody wanna do it? Okay, moving on. Receptionist. No. Okay. Supervisor of assessments, I'll speak to this, because I may as put an X on it. This has been a very, very long time coming. She is astronomically underpaid, and has been a longtime employee, and has waited, and has, last year, I wanted to put it on, and she said, no, I'll wait. But, which I appreciated a great deal, but I, it's just frankly inappropriate how we pay her. If you look at anything, size of her county, volume of work, just any way you slice it. So, I, I know it's recurring, but I, it's a very small dollar amount. This doesn't actually get her to, like, actually even being competitive, it just moves her in that direction, so I would say yes.
This is also just for everyone's knowledge, her, most of her salary is reimbursed by the state, so this is only the portion that we have to pay. I mean, we're really leaving money on the table by not taking advantage of the state reimbursement, or I think it's half of her salary, I think, is what gets reimbursed.
So, that said, she'd be getting double this raise? This is just our bill? Oh, okay.
I believe so.
Then that does get her actually closer to, like, being similar. Okay. Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
I guess I go back to the whole salary study and the compression. Is this somebody who's, would be covered under that, or is this completely separate?
I don't think this position would accurately be compared under the salary study, because there's no market study for this kind of position. The only thing you can do for this kind of position is go look at other counties, and there is a very extensive spreadsheet made based on number of parcels, square footage of the county, and what other supervisor of assessments make. I can dig it out and send it to you if you really wanna look at a bunch of numbers. And she is, like, I think, per parcel is the most egregious one, which is, what her office deals with, is every single parcel in the county. The wage of this position is significantly less than other county competitors. Not competitors, but other county comparables.
I will, that study is now, I think, two years old. It was conducted by a board member, Mr. Wayne Williams. When I run into him out in the wild, he yells at me about this every single time I see him. I did all that work, and y'all did nothing with it, and I just pretend I don't see him and go in the other direction. So, yeah. All right, we're all on board. Moving on. Deputy collector.
Did we kind of all agree that we were going to fund this?
No. We all agreed that we are going to fund her a position that is already in the budget. This is a second position.
That was the $68,000, right?
Yeah, so, the position that's already been funded is her standard position, which is called an account clerk, which is the majority of her staff. So, we gave her another account clerk position. This is a request for a new position that does not currently exist, that would be at a higher level, and I believe the focus of this position would be solely on the collector side, so working with the collector banks and dealing with collector-based financial issues. I think, if my, if I'm remembering correctly, is what I believe her, her goal was with this new position.
All right. Yes? I don't see anybody else wanna say anything. No?
This is also, I mean, this has been something we've consistently talked about. If we get the tax increase, it's on the list.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we?
Right, so we're done with this, except for the ARPA-funded digitization, which we punted.
Are we standing strong on the probation officer?
Diane.
I really would like to stand on this one. I think we're, we're still less than $100,000 here, which is a lot of money, but not in the scheme of things, I guess. It seems like we have more and more court cases. Those court cases have let a lot of people out earlier, and there is a bigger need for someone, for them to be in contact with, and that they need to keep in contact with. And so, I think this is kinda the nature of the beast of what has happened with us expediting people's releases and being responsible to go back to somebody. I hope I said that politely.
And I'm just gonna be obnoxious and piggyback off on that, which is why we're asking for an increase to the public safety sales tax. So, again, like, we need everyone to be working towards this, because the expectations on us are higher. We are the only entity that executes our criminal justice system in the county, and we cannot do it the way that these people are entitled to have it done at the amount of revenue that we currently have.
Can I ask a actual question? Do probation officers, are they responsible for people pre-trial? Or they only, so this actually is only for people that are post-release, correct? No? I honestly don't know. That's, I wanna know.
From what I can recall, when I was at the state attorney's office, the probation officers did have to meet with people for, like, DUIs, so they had to do pre-sentence investigations and meet with people. So, I do know that that's something that they do. And then, when we have deferred sentencing, like, second chance court for felonies, and I, we used to have it for misdemeanors as well, they also meet with people who are technically not on, like, the deferred sentence. So, it's not always after, it's sometimes during or before.
Thank you. That was actually, I just didn't know.
Yeah, they participate in drug court.
Thank you.
And also, more people are on probation. If you compare between now and five years, 10 years, 15 years ago, more people are sentenced to probation now than prison. The DOC incarceration rate is lower, probation is higher, and we, just going back to the numbers that Director Siders gave us, there's, the caseload is, it's crazy high for our current probation officers.
Jenny.
And everybody is overworked, and like, we need more people, but yes, again, that is why we need the public safety sales tax. Like, we, I voted no, and I would vote no again, because we can't fund another position. Like, when we're talking about having to potentially make cuts to staff next year, I can't fund another position. The one I raised my hand on was the grant funded, because it's 80% paid for, but even that felt cringy inside. I like, I don't wanna spend money on more people when there's potential to lay off people next year, in 2026 budget, I guess.
I will, I will point out that we have already argued and voted on this one, so, channeling my inner Eric, is there anybody who's changing their vote? Then I call the question, move to ARPA. All definitely deserve robust discussion. I, I do not think that as a deliberative body, we lack in our deliberation.
So based on the changes to the general fund and public safety sales tax, here are the new running totals. We're to a $2.7 million deficit total now.
So we added 100 something thousand? No, it has to be higher because was it, wasn't it a five? Oh, the waste hauling.
Here's the, here's the running totals that we added to each.
Okay. Oh, you know why? It's because, no, no, it's the waste hauling, but it's also a public safety sales tax. So we added 229,000 to the deficit across the board.
Correct.
Okay. At least the, I'll try to find a silver lining. At least the general fund percentage, if you round it, didn't change. It was 27. Before we started this, I, for a while there, I was a little bit worried that that like actual percentage was going to change and I was going to be like call a timeout where I just walked around the circle for a while. Moving on, ARPA. Okay, so. It's about right. Right? I think that's right. Or at least close. Yeah. Okay. Is there a difference? There's a 10, somewhere in one of those hidden columns, there's a 10 grand.
Okay. So here's what's coming back here, well, not coming back, but needs to be reallocated. We have two kind of outstanding issues. One is the Passodam Consolidated Drainage District. They're having a lot of difficulty getting their UEI number, which is a federal requirement to get ARPA funds over $50,000. So we've had extensive conversations with them, trying to help them figure it out. They have a lawyer. I think at some point, we're going to have to say, if you don't have the UEI, we can drop it down to $49,999 and give them that amount of money without the UEI number. Or, I don't know, reallocate the whole thing, which, you know, I don't, I'm not proposing that for sure, but I, I think we need some guidance from you all that there's a date that we can say, okay, if you don't have it by this time, we're moving forward with the 49,999.
I have no idea. We're just going to go around the horn. Yes?
So I talked to the president of the drainage commissioners. The money is spent, they have the invoices, they are ready to turn everything over to us. In the hundred and some years of the Passodam Consolidated Drainage District, they've never done anything with federal money. That's why they're having trouble getting this number. They went to their attorney, he's been taking his sweet time. Guess what? I know their attorney, so I started harassing him. I'm confident they're going to get this fixed. This is, these are farmers that don't go and do these things, so that's why they're relying on their attorney and their attorney is a, he's mostly a real estate attorney and I don't think he does this very often. So I've offered to help him walk through the process, whatever it is, to get it done. But the money is spent, it's literally getting this number so we can put it on their paperwork and be done with them.
Okay, so we're going to hold JJ responsible for making sure.
What I heard is, what I heard JJ said is that he personally will refund us the 25 grand if we have to send it back to the feds.
Please come to my memorial service.
And the other item is.
Oh, no, wait, we have Mr. Thorson.
Oh, sorry.
There was a night during COVID where I sat in this room alone with a laptop and held all these water drainage districts and water project things as ELOC chair. And I'm not certain it was them, but it might've been the only two people who showed up thinking it was an in-person meeting, might've been Passodam. Hearing that the money's spent, at a minimum, if somehow this attorney fails them and you can't help them, we need to get them the 49,999, but I'd like to get them the whole thing. Because one of the things that was really good that we did with the ARPA money in the beginning, it was very specifically spelled out, right there in all of the drafts, was to do water projects. So I hope you're successful, JJ. Let's, let's get that to them.
It's in the official notes.
And then at the minimum, let's get them the $1 shy of the 50 and then try to sort the rest out later.
I will be calling Stephanie and letting her know of the commitment. Jenny?
This is maybe just a silly question for me. Is the, the limit like every, for, for per project or is it per year?
It is per entity.
Okay.
So like.
So they would have to get it. We couldn't like hold the other 20, 25,001.
It's per recipient.
Got it. Got it.
Otherwise, everyone would've done that and no one would've bothered.
What kind of entity you are? Yeah. Okay. All right.
So the other item then is the digitization that we keep talking about. So we started off with a $1.4 million allocation. We've spent just under 500,000. We have 928 left and we need a total of $409,000 is the whole shortfall. Clerk Ammons is offering to reallocate the $60,000 of ARPA funds that was put towards a high-speed scanner for him and contribute $140,000 from his recorder automation fund to contribute $200,000 to our shortfall. So what we really need made up, if we want to finish the whole project of its original scope, is $269,000.
All right, so since we're talking digitization, this is that same amount, I just want to make sure I totally understand that. This is the same amount that was on that other, the, just the general chart, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is that same thing that you bounced from the first spreadsheet.
Okay.
And just one more piece of information before we all jump into that. So again, we've got the 416 of reallocation and then for your information, we have 384,000 of interest accrued up until August 31st of this year.
I just, to update one of your numbers on there, the request on the Village of Ludlow, they got Stephanie and I numbers today. It's 108,000.
108.
Came in at 108, but that is, that's $108,000 to completely finish the project with their water system that is rapidly failing for drinking water there in the Village of Ludlow. And they're paying for that with a combination, Dr. Store asked me this other day, they are paying for that with a combination of, they have spent down their village funds, they have USDA loans and grant money. So they have a skin in the game. I know you wanted to know that.
And we're sure they can finish that? Like that's, is that already done or is that?
Yeah, it's, the project is, if they don't get additional funds to finish this, they will be filling in manholes that are already dug. So it's ready to go tomorrow.
If I can add to that, because I've been working with the mayor there, that's exactly right. They, they started on things and now they have holes in the village and kids are walking around them and once again, we've got water out that needs to be covered up. If there's one thing that we can do for a life safety issue, this definitely would be it.
And a reminder again, that water was one of the priorities when we were initially allocating funds. I would be all for indicating my approval of finishing that project.
Just to more specific, the village has specifically put $570,000 into this. USDA grant funds are at 1,910,000. The original ARPA allocation was 370,000 and the new ARPA allocation would be 108,000, meaning that our ARPA allocation would not be the even highest amount even with the new allocation. And I also wanted to mention that one of the reasons we have money left over is we did not end up giving all of the money to CELA to put the roofs on the houses and I would like to keep at least a portion of that money in the rural area because that is what we allocated it for to begin with. It was, you know, a different project. All right, so. All right. Yes.
So I just have a question. So we have the interest that we'll be able to spend, the ARPA interest?
The ARPA interest, yes, we can spend. We can spend it. It is just our money. It does not have any of the ARPA requirements on it. And I specifically bring that up because if we're talking about budgetary issues, this is free form, free money that I, I think is worth considering how we spend this money because when do we ever get truly free form, free money that we can spend on something? So right now it's 384, it'll continue to grow, not as much as it has, but you know, until we've spent down the entire bulk of the money, we're still accruing interest on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Store?
Am I correct that we're at a difference here between requests and, and amount that we have for reallocation of $90,189?
Yeah, except for that total doesn't include if you are moving expert witness money into ARPA.
Right.
For the public defender's office, because I didn't have that on here when I first drafted this.
So this is, I appreciate the conversation, but it's getting a little bit freewheeling, so we're going to structure it. We're going to start with digitization. Right now, we have digitization, wrapping up the digitization project that we started with ARPA money, using some of this returned money. How do folks feel about that? Nobody seems to want to speak on it. Is anybody against it? Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought you were thumbs upping. Okay.
Given that we're going with the Ludlow has skin in the game, they only need 100,000 more to finish it and the clerk has gone above and beyond about getting the half of money he needs to finish his, I would say just make it a package deal, include both of those, that's $377,000 and then worry about what's left. Just to save some time.
Against that? Okay. Next up, I think we could have this next two conversations together. We have been discussing these for a while now. We now have actual formal proposals. These are two projects that for various reasons, including illness of one of the people, like pretty severe illness, were not considered when we did any of like the community prevention type of thing and we, Chair Carter's spoken to these, Mr. Summers has spoken about one of them, I think about 77 times. So these, when these two groups came to us, what we said to them was, if we're going to do something for you at this late, it has to be capital. It's, we can't be getting into new, new programs. These are two things that would've definitely been funded if they had been part of that mix. Yeah. Yes.
I don't know if you guys are familiarized with these two organizations, but they have done so much with our youth in our community. They have struggled. I have seen them use their own money to fund different activities and different trips for the youth in our community. During the time that I was trying to reach out to Abandoned Neighborhood Connection Center, I didn't know because everything was quiet amongst their family, but Ms. Janice Mitchell was on her last days. And for so many years, she has been just a beacon of light for so many families enduring hardship, loss, anything within the educational system because she was also a teacher. So I would, if you all, please consider Reverend Calmer and his midnight basketball. He literally takes young people off the street on the weekends to play basketball and also to give their life to Christ. So both of these organizations have been with me or I've been with them for years in this community. They've helped so many, including myself, with the raising of my kids. So right now, they need transportation. They often do college tours all over the United States with the youth and they could both use the, the transportation. So thank you.
I think they both sound like really great causes, but also just wanted to point out that if we potentially had funds to support juvenile delinquency prevention, these would be the kind of programs that we could support with them, it sounds like. Just again, a reminder why we need public safety sales tax, because this is something that we could support more.
I, I will also say, as somebody who wrote grants and who wrote grants specifically for youth programs, it is borderline impossible to get transportation money from a grant, unless it's part of a broader program, but just I need to purchase transportation? Nope. Like that's just not, you're not getting in it. Like there's, so I'm going to go ahead and make a proposal, because it's getting late, that we fund both of these and the overrun comes from the ARPA interest. Okay? Okay? Then I, secondly, am going to make a proposal that the, I'm sorry. Expert witness for 2025 is funded from the interest.
How, how, how much?
Oh, the, the 35. And then I'm going to make a proposal, anybody could speak to these, I'm not trying to like go through, did anybody want, no? Then I'm going to make a proposal that we do nothing with the rest of the interest and let it grow and then also in case there's another, I mean, I feel like this board has gotten very like, we have ARPA, that will save the day and it has saved a lot of days. We can sort of extend that a little bit with no rules if we just let that money sit here. So that does kind of in the back of our minds, I don't, what, I don't know where, where that interest would be, what, 300 or something? So we have a quarter of a million dollars less, which means that, you know, maybe I could take the hit on the general fund with a little bit less of a, yeah, stress. Is anybody in disagreement? Or, yeah?
I have a question. And I don't have a photographic memory. So when we were looking at the list, I think the things that we were funding were all reoccurring with maybe the exception of the state's attorney for the 16,000. So were we thinking that that 16 was going to come from this ARPA money? Or just go ahead and do general fund and just roll on from there? Okay, just double checking.
It just because that grant is, it, it just seems.
And what about waste haul? Can't waste haul come out of ARPA because it's a one-time deal?
No, it's recurring. We'll lose that revenue forever unless Eric and his band of merry people decide to get us that revenue back.
Okay, thanks.
Can we get a copy of this, please, so we can add it to our folder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, could we get a printout of, can we get a printout at the next meeting of just the things we decided to fund? Okay. Y'all are amazing. First of all, really, really quickly, so we've decided everything we're deciding, I want to acknowledge the incredible amount of work that the admin put into this. Thank you to Travis. This, this was run, I know it was painful, but I mean. This, this was run, I know it was painful, but, I mean, we talked about a lot of different issues and it would not have been possible without the work that Travis, and they even had a like planning meeting about how to run this meeting. So thank you all for your deep thoughts.